Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, August 30, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. All council meetings are livestreamed on the city’s website. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kael Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you’re able to and remain standing for a moment of silence. Today, we ask you to keep—Jack Shea, the Labor Leader, who just passed away yesterday, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Thank you. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
No move.
A second? Any discussion? Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is amended. Thank you. The next order of business is proclamations, and I have one to be read into the record. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Kael Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August 27, 2022, to be Kevin Bat Andrews’ Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can a motion to approve in a second?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. That moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker? And the first registered speaker I have is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Georgetown, New York, Mueller, Belsuver, Mexico City, Mexico, Global Intelligence Society, U.S., national candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. Concerns of Pittsburgh Council include local security, LS, national security, NS, and identity politics. For reference, United States Constitutional State, 1789, USCS, and United States National Security State, 1947, USNSS. DPRP identity politics on LS, NS. Republicans, Democrats, both say that each other are evil. Let’s see. The USNSS and USCS confusion emerged during the presidency of Dwight David Eisenhower, DDE. Eisenhower didn’t listen to anybody when he was a cadet at West Point. He had among the worst records for obeying orders of anybody there. One, 1947, 31 June, the U.S. Military Five-Star DDE signs off on the National Security Act that made the CIA. Two, 1952, 4 November, Republican Party, RDDE, is elected President of the United States. On the same day, 1952, 4 November, the National Security Agency is established using the National Security Act. That means that the two are put together in relationship—the two states—in relationship to Dwight David Eisenhower. Three, 1954, 10 July, DDE signs the Agriculture Assistance Act, which is welfare for farmers because farmers were a part of his national defense strategy. 1954, 29 June, Republican DDE signs the National Interstate Defense Highways Act. Number five, 1957, 9 September, RDDE signs the 1957 Civil Rights Act. To Dwight Eisenhower, civil rights was a defense and security issue, and this act was extremely important to him. It established the United States Commission on Civil Rights and generated voting rights protections, the first since Reconstruction. To be continued.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Tuno.
Members of City Council, thank you for allowing me to address this session. My name is Bob Tuno, and I live on Washington’s Landing. Except for a few years, I have lived in the Pittsburgh area my entire life. In fact, when my wife and I retired, we purchased a home on Washington’s Landing simply to be closer to all the things that are Pittsburgh to us. The beautiful Riverfront Trail was a prime reason to buy where we did. Unfortunately, today, the trail is not so beautiful, and my wife and I fear for our safety, and so we seldom walk or bike on it. The city has allowed campers to use the area as their personal garbage dump, drug site, and place to panhandle. I am told that many of those living along the shore are homeless and have emotional and other problems. That most likely is true, but is this the best place for them? What does it say for us as a city if we allow our homeless to live and sleep in tents? What does it say for us as a city if the fine work done by volunteers who love the trail is allowed to be desecrated with litter, graffiti, and feces? What does it say for us as a city if parents hesitate to take their children on a bike ride? What does it say for us as a city if tourists are advised to avoid the trail due to the issues I have noted? I have been told that some of the tents that these campers reside in were given to them. I’m sure those who provided shelter were well-intentioned, but providing tents and residing in them—allowing them to reside in them—is invalidation in the minds of the property—of the campers, the propriety of staying here. Instead, we must give them a reason to live. I’m sure many of you are familiar with Viktor Frankl, who wrote the book Man’s Search for Meaning. Frankl survived four years in Auschwitz because he was able to find meaning in his suffering. As Frankl said, “If there is a why, then there must be a how.” In short, we must give our homeless a reason to live and not simply sustain their physical being. I strongly believe that Frankl’s words are instrumental to a change in the lives of our Riverfront guests. Temporary shelter must be provided for sure, but a purpose to life must be part of the solution. A meaningful, structured day with as much responsibility as can be handled must be part of any program of community service. We brag to the rest of the world that Pittsburgh is a blue-collar city, that we can do anything we set our minds to. My question is, was that the Pittsburgh of yesterday, or does the blood of our past still course through our veins today? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is C. Paul Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Council, for having us speak to you today. We appreciate it. My name is Paul Scott. I’m speaking for myself and my wife Nancy, who is sitting right over here. I wanted to bring—briefly bring a human face to the problem that you are considering today. We live on Washington’s Landing also. Our home is nearby to the bridge and the switchback that bring walkers and bicyclists up from the Allegheny River Trail. About two weeks ago, we were at home, middle of the day, and there was a very insistent ringing of our doorbell. I went to the door, and thinking that there was some emergency, I opened the door. There was a woman standing right on the threshold of the door who proceeded to attempt to push her way into the house. She was pushing very hard. She got partway in. She put her foot in the doorjamb. I was very upset. I managed to push her foot back out and push the door closed. She stood on the porch, banging on the door, and then left the porch and went down the street, going into several other driveways along the street until I lost sight of her. Fortunately, no one was hurt. We were shaken up. I’m sure she was not in a very good state, but nobody was hurt. My concern, as everyone’s, I’m sure, is that some plans be developed before something tragic happens. If something tragic happened, that would galvanize everyone. Oh, my goodness. How did we let this happen? We need to act first, and I thank Council for taking up this issue. And what I have seen of the plan of the bill under consideration looks to me to be a very good start. It’s up to us to protect the welfare of all citizens, those who have homes and those who do not. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Mark Anderson, and Mark is joining us online. Mark Anderson?
Is he muted? You’re muted, Mark. Could you please unmute your mic? I’m going to call Mark Anderson. Okay. Thank you. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. Hi, my name is Mark Anderson. I am a little bit near the south side of Pittsburgh, on Portland Street. I’m calling today because I have been submitting constant write-in notes, work plans about the purchase of veterans, veterans with homelessness. Every year, there is a report that gives out that gives the measures on minority homelessness policies. There’s never anything regarding veterans, their inclusion on the issue. But I found that every year that veterans are not being included in anything in the city. I have submitted multiple emails to the mayor. I’ve seen about submitting different strategies that could bring more homelessness inclusion to the city, and I just ignore it. And so, I don’t know why the veterans are not being able to participate in the developments that were being made for veterans, particularly in the housing, the HAD program, there’s HAD that are not being used, the Operation Homefront, it hasn’t even had the name completed by the city until—I just want to bring this city to account of it, veterans not being included at all, my opinion.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Clifford Stevenson—Clifford N. Stevenson. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cliff Stevenson, and I am president of the Homeowners Association at Washington’s Landing, where I have lived for 24 years. First of all, I want to thank the Council for their efforts to address the homelessness issue in Pittsburgh through your public statements and your proposed bill 2022-6077, which I strongly support. Most of the talk about the homelessness issue has been about the macro issue. The general homeless issue in Pittsburgh as a whole, and how do we solve it with transitional housing? In my three minutes, however, I want to address the micro issue that is more important to me and my neighbors, and that issue is public safety. Until last October, there were no tents or encampments on the North Side Trail. Now, as you know, there are at least 50 tents on the trail and under the bridges on the north side, from the Ninth Street Bridge to the 31st Street Bridge. In particular, there is now a large group of homeless only 50 yards from my house on the proposed First Division DPW relocation site off of River Road. In speaking with a police officer from the first precinct, contrary to what is publicized in the media that most of the North Side homeless are Pittsburgh-area down—people down on their luck that have lost their jobs, he said that they are, quote, “stealing city bikes as well as private bikes,” and that most of these people are from other parts of the country. When he asked them, “Why do they come to Pittsburgh?” They say there are programs here that they get free tents and three meals a day at the homeless shelter. Drug dealing is rampant, and drug addicts like to be near their drug dealers. There’s also sex trafficking going on in this area, unquote. So for me and my neighbors, this is foremost a crime in safety, not a social issue. I do sympathize with the general homelessness problem. For the last 25 years, the two charities every year that have gotten the most donations from myself and my wife have been the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank and the Light of Life Mission. I believe no one should be homeless. However, my greater concern today is the immediate safety of my family and my neighbors. I sincerely applaud the efforts of Council is making, but I believe that the mayor could be doing more. I believe this because in 2001, there was a large homeless community living on the Clemente Bridge in the area where the kayaks used to be until this year. That was the first year PNC opened, and in bringing my parents, siblings, and children from out of state to our loving new ballpark, we had to walk near the homeless camp to get to the games, and the smell and visuals were disgusting. I wrote Mayor Murphy and enclosed pictures of the encampment, and four days later, the homeless were gone, and I got a call from the mayor’s chief of staff. Four years ago, there was an encampment under the 31st Street Bridge. We notified our then-council member, who pressured the mayor’s office, and two months later, they were gone, and cyclone fencing was erected. These past requests tell me that if the mayor had the political will, he could do something about this public safety issue before something serious occurs. He needs to realize there are 300,000 residents in Pittsburgh, and we are all his people, and he serves all of us, just not a select group. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Nicholas P. Surtow.
Members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I’m Nick Surtow. I live on Washington’s Landing, and I’m here today to comment on the conditions along River Road, the Three Rivers Heritage Trail between Ninth Street and 31st Street Bridge. I’m an almost daily user of that stretch of the trail, and there have always been a few homeless individuals who camp close to the river, out of sight, moat for the most part, and their stays were usually short. But since March, the number of homeless campsites has grown dramatically, and in all that time, the city and the county stood by and let that happen. Campsites are no longer back among the trees. Many of them are situated right against the trail, just an arm’s length from bikers and people walking. The campers make heaps of refuse. Their behavior is unpredictable, and my neighbors and I have seen people passed out and sprawled on the trail pavement. We’ve witnessed people having sex openly, taking drugs, dealing drugs, urinating, even defecating in plain sight. And all this goes on along the Heritage Trail, which is meant to be a safe route for non-motorized transportation and recreation. But today, people more and more shun this section of the trail, as I have begun to do, because we feel unsafe, and yet the city and county has allowed this to happen. As the number of campers increase, public safety in the vicinity has declined. You heard from Paul Scott what happened to him, and I’ve also seen people trolling our neighborhoods at night, loitering on the section of the trail which crosses Washington Landing, and the situation is getting out of hand. My neighbors and I have a profound and growing concern for our safety, and when we complain to the police, they’re responsive, but we’ve been told that police were directed by the mayor to leave the campers alone unless there was a reported violent crime. Do we really have to wait for that? The campers are in a miserable state, and the places they have staked for their tents are not appropriate for them. There’s no sanitation, sources of potable water, and they’re open targets for criminals. The city and county should be doing something to find places where these people can be safer and in reach of services that can help them turn their lives around. That’s why I support Bill 2022-0677, sponsored by council members Gross, Coghill, Kael Smith, and Wilson. It’s a necessary step to provide transitional housing where these campers could go instead of fending for themselves, camped along the trail. Once the campers leave the trail, the ill effects on public safety and trail access, which I cited, should go away. In closing, I ask the Council and the mayor act quickly to enact the bill. As transitional housing plans roll out, we ask that the campers be humanely relocated away from the Riverfront Heritage Trail. In the meantime, we want the city to immediately take steps to stop the number of campsites from growing and enact regulations which make camping along the Riverfront Heritage Trail illegal without express prior approval, as they do in city parks. And finally, and above all, we want the city, the mayor specifically, and the county to act without delay before real tragedies occur. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And that exhausted list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. If there’s no order, you can just come to the podium. Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Bernadette. Do you want us to turn the mic around so you can stay there?
Yeah, I’m real stiff today. Thank you. I got—I’m going to have to—
Take your time.
I’m Bernadette. I’m from Beachview. First, I have to thank Anthony Coghill. Ever since I got my chair and I wanted to get out to my favorite red, white, and blue down on 51, I was being hit with slabs of cement coming up like tents. He fixed it. I am so grateful. However, if you look on Facebook, if you look on YouTube, I have it all documented and filmed between police officers, between Martin’s Auto and Rorick Toyota. Why are these property owners—and I did go to the real estate website—why are they giving a free pass to park all over the sidewalks? I caused more damage to this the other day. I’m like, oh, I’m going to go down Pauline. I heard it’s all fixed down there by the red, white, and blue. And again, Martin’s Auto has at least six cars completely blocking. I did the title searches. It’s owned by Rorick—David A. Rorick. North Star, Martin’s has the one little lot. The sidewalks are completely crumbling. When I went to high school with Johnny Castiota, and he was one of my roommates in Beach—my first place in Beachview, his dad paid back to the community. He would come up to Foodland every week. He would get food, and he would give it to all of his staff and employees. They never let the sidewalks. Not only is the parking on the sidewalks bad, the sidewalks are in such disarray. Trying to get to the beautiful new sidewalk that you fixed, Anthony, is like impossible. Why do we continue to let them? I was told last year’s night out by the boss of the West End Police Place that it would not be happening again. The cop—I have him on tape saying, “This is my route. I will not let this happen again.” But he asked me, “How often do you come down here?” So that was to pacify me. If I have to go down every single day, three—three—I mean, I’m retired—three times a day and record this and start a YouTube channel, I will. Because if any one of us went down and parked on the sidewalks to take a bus or do whatever on West Liberty Avenue, we all know we would be ticketed and towed. So why do they get a pass? Ow. Okay, I’m dizzy. No, that’s mine. No, I think it goes there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. And our next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Lou Testo. I’m here with my wife Kathy, and we’re longtime city residents, now living in Washington Landing. A little more than 10 years ago, I stood at this very podium and asked City Council to support the pass, enabling legislation that would allow the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh to place a dedicated property tax referendum on the upcoming ballot. But when I made that ask, we all knew that that one vote by our city people was not going to fix the problem. It was going to take a village. In fact, we knew that solving the library’s financial crisis was going to require a community-wide group of stakeholders to help step up and find a combination of solutions. We found those solutions because we listened to the ideas that came from the people living in our communities, from the foundations and other relevant community organizations, from the mayor, from the county executive and council, from state legislatures, and from RAD, and from City Council. In my view, it was the collective genius of all of those stakeholders that collectively and caringly and sustainably helped make the library financially stronger, public service benefiting all of our citizens. Today, I again stand before the podium to ask City Council support to help address another critical issue that affects our communities. You’ve heard from some of those that spoke before me, and I’m certain you will continue to hear others describe the clear, compelling, and concrete examples of the nature and extent of the issues associated with the many homeless people in our community. But please allow me to state the obvious. The issues surrounding the homeless are not just a North Side or downtown or an uptown issue, they’re a community-wide issue. Solving North Side issues will just cause similar issues, and even worse, to pop up elsewhere in the city or the county. We need a long-term solution, not a bunch of short-term fixes. In my view, there are no silver bullets, and I’m not convinced any one organization or group of elected officials should be expected to muster a comprehensive list of options to address and sustainably resolve this issue. That’s why I’m advocating for an approach that the City Council and past mayors have used before, one that embraces and includes all important stakeholders to form a community-wide leadership group to gather and consider the views of our communities, the organizations that already support, best understand, and can represent the views of the homeless, the mayor, city council, county leaders, and maybe even someone from state legislators in the RAD. Offering meaningful opportunity for this community-based leadership group to work side-by-side with smart and dedicated legislators and other relevant stakeholders will significantly increase the chances of that great ideas and appropriate problem-solving options will emerge. In addition, this group can also bring in their networks of others that can help with this problem. In summary, I don’t think throwing more money at this homelessness issue will properly solve the problem. I’m asking for you to make an investment in our community by getting the right people, the right organizations, and the appropriate legislators involved in to assure better outcomes for everyone at stake in this cause. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And if there are any further speakers wishing to address City Council, please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record.
I’m Dale from Brookline, and my concerns are—there’s alleyways that are being paved that do not need paved, and our alleyway needs paved, and they missed the alleyway. And there’s potholes, and somebody’s going to get hurt. Like, if a wheelchair comes down in the alleyway, they’re going to flip over. There’s big potholes. Why do we always get missed? And on Brookline Boulevard, okay, there’s a house, 1325 Brookline Boulevard in Burchland. There is a contractor—they need city inspectors out there because they build this one—it looks like a wall, but it’s supposed to be a sidewalk, and the wall comes down where the wheelchairs go up on the sidewalk. It’s blocking where the wheelchairs can’t go up. They need to get the city inspectors out to this house, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just tell me again what neighborhood that is?
To what?
What neighborhood?
Brookline.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, you have the best on it, so I’m sure he’ll work on it. Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Good morning, City Council Presidents, City Council and attendees. My name is Ms. Threet. There are plans to spend over $14 million to redevelop a Homewood football field located at Hamilton between Lang and Claussen. On this—it is—to this date, the homeowners and residents have not been contacted directly in regards to the plans of the Homewood Field, or AKA Stargill Field. I am publicly asking for the mayor, City Council, City Planning, City Zoning, Homewood Sports, Zone 5 Commander, URA, financial backers, and collaboratives to meet publicly with the homeowners and residents in regards to the design and the planned redesign of Homewood Park. Meet on September 10 at 10:00 a.m. Meet on September 10 at 10:00 a.m. at Homewood Library. It is in regards to bring awareness through the lens of the residents and homeowners that are affected, homeowners, so that you can see and be able to get their opinion. Who was taking the home out of Homewood? Again, September 10 at the Homewood Library at 10:00 a.m. Over $14 million is being spent for Homewood Park-Stargill Field. Thank you for your time and your cooperation.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
Madam President.
Yes.
I usually don't say much to public comment, and, of course, we're willing to have conversations with the community, but there has been an extremely extensive, community-driven process to redo Stargill Field. My church faces the field. I grew up a block from the field. I understand, I know the homeowners that are disaffected, I know when it was built, I know who built it, built the residence. There are probably 10 of them, maybe 12 of them, and I understand their concerns. But their concerns are only part of a larger community. Their concerns are not their concerns just by themselves, right? The Homewood deserves a safe place for these kids to recreate. It deserves a new pool. It deserves and has guided national attention to invest $14 million in the state-of-the-art athletic facilities. Now, certainly, we need to talk. For instance, I believe the parking lot that they now have in the back of the park should be in the front of the park, right? Because I fear that the people who park on the streets won't go to the back of the park, they'll go to the first available place. And so, you know, certainly, we're willing to talk to the residents, but to imply that there has not been an extraordinarily extensive community process, both meetings, and charrettes, and questionnaires, and all those things, is a little disingenuous. And so, I am willing to talk, I'm always willing to talk, but I want to be very clear that this process that we're engaged in is for a very small minority, which I support, love them, but it's a small minority of the Homewood population and Homewood homeowners, not all of them, it's about 10 to 12 people, who are disaffected disproportionately. Let's sit down and talk about it, but realize that development is going to occur, and that we have to, including my church, right? My churches also, they park all over my church on Sunday morning, if there's a game, the parishioners have no place to come. And I'm, and the garbage, I'm aware of all that because I've lived it with you, I've been there 38 years, you know, I'm a stakeholder, too. But let's work together, and I just want to tell the public, this is part of a long process that has been inclusive, that will hopefully end with a brand-new park, brand-new pool, brand-new amenities, brand-new scoreboard, and a safer place for the kids to play football that everybody can enjoy. I usually don't have this long moment after public comment, but thank you very much. I had to at least say that the conversation has been ongoing and very, very robust.
Thank you, Reverend. I just want to go through this one more time. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Councilman Reverend Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Councilman Coghill. Councilwoman Grossberg, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman Grossberg. Councilman Coghill.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 682, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into a Commodity Agreement with PBSC Urban Solutions for the Purchase of Equipment for the Healthy Ride Electrified Project at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,095,000.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. No.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 683, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the City of Bridges Community Land Trust, Site E, Zero Hazelwood Avenue, Ward 15. Bill Number 684, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located Along Grandview Avenue at the Intersections of Augusta Street and Shaler Street, Including Those Parcel Numbers Identified on the Attached Exhibit A. Bill Number 685, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Epic Development LLC or a Related Entity for the Sale of Property in the First Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 687, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh Designating URA as the City's Agent for Administration of the 2022-2023 Home Investments Partnership Program. Bill Number 688, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Communion LLC or a Related Entity for the Sale of a Property in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 689, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All of the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, Zero Flowers Avenue, North Side of Flowers Avenue, Between Nansen Street and Glenwood Avenue, Council District Number Five. Bill Number 690, Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, Zero Kirkpatrick Street, West Side of Kirkpatrick Street, Between Webster and Wiley Avenues, Council District Number Six. Bill Number 691, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All of the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, 35 and 39 West Elizabeth Street, Council District Number Five. Bill Number 692, Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the publicly-owned properties in the Third Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, North Side of Reed Street, Between Heldman and Roberts Street, and East Side of Miller Street, North of Colwell, Council District Number Six. And Bill Number 693, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All of the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the First Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, Zero Tustin Street, South Side of Tustin Street, West of Seneca Street, Council District Number Six.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 695, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Pepsi of $10,000 to be deposited into the operating budget of the Bureau of Fire.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Public Safety Services, Madam Clerk. And I'm gonna make Councilman Kraus the Chair of that committee, and then I'll just take HR. Yeah, or I'll give HR to somebody if they want to take it.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 696, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into Relevant Agreements or Execute Required Purchase Orders for a Hyundai EDR kit with GIT America at a Cost Not to Exceed $7,725.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, I'm sorry, do we have a, why is this in red? Do you know?
For which one?
Okay, I'm sorry. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 697, Resolution Amending Number 44 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Computronics USA Inc. to Extend the Term on a Month-to-Month Basis and at Additional Cost Not to Exceed $789,531.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 698, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic District under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, the Certain Properties Known as the Murray Hill Historic District Expansion, Located at 1163 Murray Hill Avenue and 1165 Murray Hill Avenue in Squirrel Hill in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The Owners of 1165 Murray Hill Avenue Supports the Nomination. Bill Number 699, Resolution Amending Resolution 336 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement or Agreements with Women for a Healthy Environment for the Contribution of an Amount Not to Exceed $45,000, the Collection of $50 in Payment to the City of Pittsburgh per each participant, and to Assist with Organizing Renovation, Repair, and Painting. Training for General Contractor License Holders in Connection with the City's Led Safe Ordinance. Women for a Healthy Environment shall pay City at a Rate of $100 per Participant, which Amount Includes $50 contributed by Women for a Healthy Environment and $50 separately collected from each participant for the Payment in an Amount Not to Exceed $90,000.
And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one communication.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 700, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Zoe Burns per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018.
Motion to read, receive, file, please, Madam President.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file, please?
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And our next order of business is Reports, I'm sorry, it's not Reports Committee for Final Action. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing no unfinished business, we now move on to Reports Committee for Final Action, and we'll begin with Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 519. Bill Number 678, excuse me, reported a Committee on Finance and Law for August 24 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 519, Resolution Amending 347 of 2020, which authorized the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Cosino Corner for Professional Legal Services in Connection with an Employment-Related Matter by Increasing the Total Spend by $25,000 for a New Not to Exceed Amount of $40,000. And Bill 562, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group for the Purpose of Providing an Annual Analysis of Community Reinvestment of Possible City Depositories and Other Associated Work Associated with RFPs for City Depository Analysis. Total Cost Will Not Exceed $75,000 over a Three-Year Period.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just gonna make a comment, if there's no, if anyone else, about the PCRG bill. I was gonna make a motion to recommit the bill, but I'm going to just say that going forward, I think we're gonna look at this process. If they're the only people willing to, able to do this in the City of Pittsburgh, maybe we need to look at a different process. I feel like we're just funneling money to an organization and not necessarily getting deliverables on some things that I know that we had concerns with in my district, unrelated to this, but separately. But I just want to make sure that we're not doing that kind of stuff, that we're making sure that we're doing this budget and doing this process in a way that we yield great results without just giving a contract to one organization time and time again. Thank you. Anything else from members? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of their passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye on all bills, except for no on Bill 0562.
Eight ayes on 519, and seven ayes on 562, and one no.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Madam President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 658, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement or Amendments with Microsoft for Microsoft Unified Enterprise Support Services, a Comprehensive Support Solution which is a Combination of Proactive, Reactive, and Service Delivery Management Services that Support Microsoft Products and/or Online Services for Sum Not to Exceed $81,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of their passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed, and I skipped Councilman Wilson's committee. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President.
Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 679, Reported the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for August 24 of 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 593, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Hines Endowments for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Endowments for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of Fifty Thousand Dollars to Help a Strategic Plan.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President. Aye. Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us also to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Beg your pardon, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number Six Eighty-one, Reported the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for August twenty-fourth, Two Thousand and Twenty-two with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number Five Eighty-five, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Proposed Meridian Development Located at Sixty-three Twenty Shakespeare Street.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President. Aye. Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a meeting announcement. Tomorrow, Wednesday, August thirty-first at ten a.m., council will hold our standing committees meeting. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight. Is there anything from members? So, I'm just going to add that there's a couple of things we're waiting to change and restructure a little bit, some of the committees, we're waiting for the Rules Committee, they need to meet to go over that. Councilman Kraus is now the Chair of that. Councilman Kraus, I'm hoping that you get the meeting together as soon as possible. I know you've been busy with some serious things going on, so I hope that you get that meeting together and that we have some movement on that in the next week or two. Okay?
That's my resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. And then, I'm also going to appoint Councilman Kraus as the Chair of Public Safety and reappoint Councilwoman Strasburger to the Library Board, and we need to make sure that those go through next week. I'll do all those things, just so people know what's coming up forward. But I also want to form a special committee on the homelessness in the city of Pittsburgh and how we are addressing it as a body and as a city and working with our county partners. And I think it's going to have to be all of us, as people come to this room, all the time, they're always saying the same thing, work together. You know, the county gets a billion dollars worth of, a billion dollars to help with social services in the city. They're doing a lot of things, we want to know what they're doing, we want to see how those things are the things that are needed in the city of Pittsburgh, and maybe there should be some of their funds redirected, maybe some of ours funds should be redirected, maybe some of our efforts need refocused. Whatever it is, I'm going to put four members on and a group of other people, so we'll be, it will be external, it won't just be internal. And if people want to work with us, great, if not, and we'll have a public hearing and a post-agenda on those things so that the public knows what the City Council is doing, all that we can under our purview. There's a limit to what we can do, but that doesn't mean our hearts aren't bigger than our authority and our jurisdiction, and we want to see this issue resolved for everyone. It's in everyone's best interest to take care of our struggling population, and I think that when we come together, we come up with solutions, and so we'll bring everyone to the table, and hopefully, the school district will be a part of that as well. So, with that said, can I have a motion? Is there anything else from members? Can I have a motion to excuse, I'm sorry, Reverend Burgess?
I just want to, first of all, just want to thank you, Madam President, for your leadership, and I know that now that we have a vacant member, I know that you have to do even more work, and I certainly want to, just want to thank you for all of your work and your leadership in, first of all. Second of all, I want to just sort of underscore what you're saying in terms of us working together. I'm trying to pull it up on my phone, but the preamble of our Homewood Charter actually tells us that we are supposed to be as a, it doesn't, it's important to have a school board, it's important to have a county, you know, human services, all that stuff is important. But at the end of the day, residents look for us, for leadership. They look for us to take care of their needs, and it is important for us that we, in this new world order, I think, we're in a different time. It's, and here goes, it says that, the Homewood Charter states this specifically about us and about our city. Our responsible city is one expects aggressive action, and aggressive actions from its officials, us, toward the Achievement of Dignified Housing, Useful Employment, Pure Air and Water, Efficient Transportation, Excellent Education, Health, Safety, Recreation, and Culture, and Other Conditions Conducive to Human Growth. We have limited ourselves sometimes, you know, to only looking at mostly policing and economic development, but the Homewood Charter has a greater vision for us, and I think, given the, this post-Povik, to see the stresses of our city, we as a city and city officials, we have to now step up and be much more comprehensive in our approach to the city, and this council has been doing that, this is not new, this council has been doing that under your leadership, and I support that, because at the end of the day, when I walk through my communities, they don't know, they don't know who's responsible for who, but they hold me responsible in order to make their communities better, whatever their problems are. And so, this is the place, I think, to do that coordinated leadership, but I think it can be done from our offices, and so I thank you for your leadership, I look forward to working with you to help greater coordination moving forward.
Thank you, Reverend. Anything else from members? And I would just say, add to that, that yes, I know that we have a greater role in the city, I wish we had the greater budget, but I'll just say, with that said, I know that, I'm confident that we can all work together, we have great relationships on every level, and where one of us don't, the other one does, so hopefully, we can work together for the betterment of the city of Pittsburgh and put that first and foremost. Okay, with that said, is there a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
The moved.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.